In the emergency meeting of the city council on Monday, eight thirty uh today uh at six P M. Uh in council chambers, uh we will have an indication by Kim Spence and we will all stand before the court.
Look, we thank you for allowing us to come together again. Well, we're asking you to look over this city and what we're going through at this time. We ask you as a governing body, help us make good sound decisions and we pray for the family of the young man that was um killed today. And we pray for the city, for peace in the city. Now, we give you glory, we thank you in advance for all that you've done, all that you're doing and all you're about to do.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Thank you very much. Uh just before uh we move on, I would like to do a quick synopsis of why the emergency meeting. Because, yes sir.
We have to stand for a moment of silence for the ground.
Oh, yes.
Before we proceed.
Yes, you can. Alright, we're going to uh Mayor Procham ask for a moment of silence for the ground. And he would like us to stand. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. I would like to ask you as soon as I finish this part.
You acknowledge the mayor's face and I would like to acknowledge as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh first of all, I would like to ask the manager, why is attorney not present?
Attorney Morgan was uh contacted, he is trying to wrap up and get here. Um I believe he's on the way. Um but that was the last response that I got that he was gonna try to make.
Thank you. Okay, and I apologize, I did uh recognize the approach, but I felt that he had something to do with that. And I did not want to go into a business type thing, and I I was assuming that that was what you were going to do. So I do apologize. Uh as I began to say, uh before we're gonna move on, I would like to just do a quick uh synopsis of why the emergency meeting. Because of of a shooting incident in the city this morning, uh the council members have assembled together information from management and our chief of police. First, I would like to make it perfectly clear that the Elizabeth City Police Department was not involved in the shooting that occurred. The Pasquotank County Sheriff's Department was the entity in charge of the crime scene. The city police arrived on the scene after receiving a nine-one-one indicating, a nine-one-one call indicating shots fired. And they uh went up on the scene in order to secure the perimeter. Any details concerning the incident should be directed uh to the Pasquotank County Sheriff's Department. In lieu of incidents that's currently occurring across the country, we thought it would be prudent to address the citizens of the city with what we know and to allay their concerns about the city's involvement. Also, in an abundance of uh abundance of caution for the safety of our senior employees, management allowed the city employees to leave at two P M. today. However, they will be back on regular schedule tomorrow. Um again, I want to emphasize that we are being proactive and we thank you for uh tuning in. Now we give it to our city manager, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um uh before I get into that, Attorney Morgan just texted me, Councilman Horton, he's not gonna be able to make it, he's still in that meeting in Gates County. Um but he said that he would be available on our phone if we need to access him.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Um so before I get started, I I do want to uh answer some of the texts that are coming in now. I want to make sure that everyone watching and listening have access to the meeting. Um you can go to cityofec dot com and at the bottom of the screen you see a live council meeting, you can click on that. And uh Mr. Pedro Holly is here, he'll be able to let you in. To watch, um and he is monitoring that that process for us. If you do, if you're unable to get uh access, uh please shoot us an email that will get you in. Uh but you should be able to access it again on www dot cityofec dot com. At the bottom of the screen is live council meeting, just click on that and that should give you access. Today is a very sad day in the city of Elizabeth City. On behalf of the staff and the organization, we extend our most heartfelt prayers and condolences to the family of Mr. Andrew Brown. We pray an extensive prayer of calm and peace over the city. And we pray that we will allow the S B I to serve us well. Um on on behalf of the organization, we will continue to serve the great citizens of Elizabeth City um as best we can with a very high honor. As your manager, um to the Brown families, we are here to serve you, we're here to help you. Please do not be afraid or be cautious to reach out to us to help as best we can. The uh the investigation is very fluid. The S B I has full control of that, so we don't have any answers in in that term, but if we can help you in any other matter, we're here to help. And now, Madam Mayor, if I may, I'll turn it over to our police chief.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you, uh Manager Freeman. I also echo the sentiments and offer my sincere condolences to Andrew Brown family and this entire community. Uh as the mayor gave a synopsis of the events that transpired this morning, uh the police department is uh fully engaged uh to bring some peace, calm uh to our community. And I have been speaking with community uh leaders throughout this city all morning in regards to this tragic tragic event. Uh the police department was not involved in the service of the search warrant. However, we did receive a call for service in regards to shots fired around eight o'clock this morning. Uh we responded and we've been on scene uh assisting with scene security as well as uh going about our normal calls for service throughout the uh normal course of the business as that is for the police department. And so the S B I is leading the uh investigation and the Pasquotank County Sheriff's Office is leading their own internal investigation into the matter as well. And uh that's where we are right now. We we also remain vigilant uh for the citizens of of this city. Uh thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh next on the agenda, the short agenda that we have actually is uh recognizing and uh council members dealing with the shootings that happened in Elizabeth City. I would just open up the floor and um uh get an indication at least from the three people who uh summoned the uh emergency meeting, uh Council Councilman Brooks, uh Councilman Horton and Councilman Atkins. I would like to report to the three members, whoever spoke first. Uh I okay, I'll start with Councilman Atkins, it's uh you first down there, you just come on around.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And as we're speaking, uh I'm doing, uh just to let everybody know, I'm recording Facebook Live because right now we got six hundred people watching from my stream. Uh so these are the people that not equipped with getting the city uh site up. So right now we got about six hundred people watching from this live. So my reason uh intake in today, we're calling this special meeting is because, you know, this event happened today in our city and one of the, in the third war, which one of the four wars that represents our city. And we have a lot of hurt people, we have a lot of hurt people uh in this city. Um as we walked out, myself, Councilman uh Horton and Brooks, as we walked out today uh into uh the scene of where things took place, you know, uh there were people crying. Uh there were people that even walked, as we walked up, were saying that, you know, here comes the city council that don't do anything, that don't, you know, voice our concerns, that don't, you know, take up for our citizens in the community. And that alone bothered me because I know individually what, you know, I stand for and what we try to, or what I try to bring to the table around this uh council about, you know, we talk about unity and coming together all the time. And so when you hear, you know, like we heard today, uh people crying out for help and answers as to why. And, you know, we we are elected officials. Uh, you know, we're not the S B I, we're not the police department, you know, we 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 were not definitely trying to overstep our boundaries. However, you know, people in the community, they look at, you know, police officers, they look at council members, they look at the city manager, they look at the mayor. Uh to come to them, you know, when they have questions, they come to us for answers. And so, you know, we went out there today just to try to get some clarity on what was taking place or what had taken place. And, you know, the officers, you know, told us that we needed to back up, you know, stand down, stand back, or whatever it is of what they're saying. And so, you know, we weren't able to give any type of peace or any type of anything to, you know, everybody that was out there to try to find out what's going on. And, you know, I stand for peace, I stand for unity, uh I know a lot, all of us round the table stand for the same thing and we just gotta come together, you know, now as a city and as a city council, you know, we gotta come together now like never before. You know, there's people outside, there's people watching on this live, there's people, I mean, I don't think some of you like really understood or understand what happened today. Like I never thought that I would look at CNN news and see my hometown. You know, CNN news, the world news, you know, five o'clock, you look, Elizabeth City, North Carolina, a little over Elizabeth City, North Carolina, where, you know, we see all this stuff happening all over the world, but we never thought that something like this would happen in our town. And people are afraid, you know, people are afraid. We got businesses on Airhouse Street boarding up their buildings, you know, they're afraid that, you know, that the riots are gonna start, they're afraid that, you know, people, that the shootings and stuff are gonna get, you know, we, you know, we have our children out here. Uh I'm a black man, you know, and I can't stand here tonight or sit here tonight and say that I'm not afraid or that I don't think about my own life, you know, because I'm a black man. And it's like, you know, I feel like that we are, that we're targeted. And, you know, I have three black sons, you know, that's growing up in this world. What am I gonna tell them, you know, when they get older? You know, uh and time for them to start driving or time for them to start, you know, being active in the community. What am I gonna tell them? Am I gonna even be here to tell them anything about the police or the law enforcement? Or, you know, just trying to make sure that they're, you know, crossing every T or dotting every I? I mean, we're afraid, you know, as a black man, standing, sitting here tonight, I'm afraid. You know, I mean, let's be real, we talk about transparency, I'm gonna be transparent. I'm afraid as a black man, walking around in this city, driving my car down the road, trying to make sure that I'm driving the speed limit, trying to make sure that I wear my seatbelt, trying to make sure that I do everything right, because I don't want an officer to get behind me, you know, or city cop, you know, I mean, a sheriff, a highway patrolman, it doesn't even have to be in my hometown, I could be somewhere else. I'm afraid that I may be the next one that, you know, my family have to see on the news that I was gunned down or or, you know, so my, to go back to, you know, why I would agree to calling this this special meeting, because we have to let our citizens know that elected us that we stand behind them, that we stand behind the Brown family, that, you know, we're standing, you know, and trusting for transparency with the S B I, that we're trusting that they're gonna do the right thing, that they're gonna bring, you know, the facts to our citizens, to us. And that, you know, we know that everyone is hurt. We know that, you know, there are so many answers that people want, uh so many questions that people want answers to and we're still very early in this investigation and, you know, a lot of the questions that people are asking, you know, we don't know the answers to, you know, because there's a process and we understand that process, but through that process, we just wanna make sure that it's transparent, that there's no covering up, that, you know, that we're gonna be, that, you know, that that the S B I is gonna do their job, that they're gonna bring back the facts and the truth and that the city council of Elizabeth City, that we are standing behind our citizens and that we want to keep this city as safe as we can. I mean, you know, we can't control what people do, you know, 'cause that was said today, you know, we letting all this stuff happen. No, we can't control what people go out here in this community and this world and do. No, I don't want nobody to go and shoot up someone or someplace. And I'm sure uh Councilman Rufia doesn't want anybody to go out here and shoot up somebody or somewhere. So we don't promote violence, we don't promote gun guns, we don't promote some of this stuff that's happening, especially what happened today. So we just want to let our citizens know that we are here and we don't like it no more than what anybody else likes it, that you know that's outside or that's watching online or that was out there on the scene today. And, you know, I'm praying that God would keep us covered, you know, that his grace, you know, that we talk about, you know, some of the preachers around the table, that we talk about God's grace is sufficient. And I'm praying that his grace and mercy, I'm trying to keep myself from crying because it's real, it's very real. And some of you at the table may not understand the pain that we feel as black people, as a black man, it's real out here. And until you have to stand in a person's shoes, you can't say, oh, I know how you feel, or it's gonna be alright. How do you know it's gonna be alright? 'Cause you don't know, you're not us, you don't walk in these shoes, you know, you're not wearing these Black Lives Matter, and we're not saying that only Black lives matter. Everybody's lives matter. But right now, the day that we're in, we are feel like we're being targeted, we are being targeted. You know, we need help, you know, this day and time is 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 sad, it's hur- it hurts. You know, it hurts to be a black man this day and time, it hurts. Because of what we have to go through and what we have to see our others uh fellow uh black people or black men have to go through in this town, it hurts. So I dare not let someone come up to me of the opposite race and tell me that it's gonna be okay or we know how, no, you don't know how we feel as black people. You don't know how we feel, so we're hurting and we're not trying to get anybody to take any sides. I just want the people of Elizabeth City to know that we hear you and we're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that we continue, because it didn't just start today. We didn't, we didn't just start wanting the violence to stop. If you've been watching the city council meetings online uh via the stream or that we have going on, we've been talking about this violence in that particular area of this town for a while now. We have been talking, Councilman Brooks has been fighting, you know, for cameras or we 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 want to assist the chief and being able to get more police officers so that, you know, more patrolling and stuff can be doing. So it didn't just start, this meeting tonight didn't just start this process that we have been trying. We have been trying for a long time to bring this violence to an end. We are a small town at heart. You know, like I said, we on CNN news, who would ever thought? You know, a little old Elizabeth City, the harbor of hospitality, you know, where we do have some of the finest police officers, we do. And thank you, Chief Buffalo. No, it didn't have anything to do with your department, you are not even aware that this was taking place this morning. But, you know, on behalf of myself, I just wanna say thank you for all that you do and for the, all that your officers do do to try to protect and keep us safe. You know, it it, 'cause it just didn't start today. I mean, a whole lot of, thank God that, you know, that it hasn't been worse than what it was today. You know, because of what you and your department do, you know, so thank you, sir. You know, if nobody else says thank you, some people may not agree with me on this live for thanking the police department, but thank you. I wanna go on record that I am thanking you for what you do and for what your officers strive to do for us every single day, because it does matter. Y'all do matter, you know, and so, uh, you know, just, we just wanna remind everybody to just try to stay calm, try to stay calm, try to, you know, we gotta give this name to God, we gotta trust that the S B I is gonna do their job. And myself along with everybody around this table, we're gonna do our best to make sure that we keep our community and our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Horton?
Uh yes, Madam Mayor.
There, stop going to your mic.
Let me just uh, Councilman Atkins really has said almost everything that I wanted to say. Um because we're in a, in a, in a, in a very pivotal place and moment in Elizabeth City. You know, Albert Einstein said that the world is a dangerous place to live, not because of the people who are evil, but because of the people who don't do anything right. And that's why we have to be here tonight, to do something about this incident, to provide, not pointing fingers at any agency or any officer, but the people of Elizabeth City that live here, that are rooted here, they desire a right to know what took place this morning. As I sit here and I see all the persons that have come out today, um I I hear them outside chanting outside because there is a a moment of hurt in Elizabeth City. People are feeling that I never thought that this would happen here and it's happened here. And what oftentimes now is adding insult to injury is the fact that we're in a process and we respect the process. I I would like to commend that the S B I has been brought in. That's a powerful statement to know that we're not looking at a a possible um investigation where uh local persons are doing, 'cause we need transparency. And that's why, Madam Mayor, when I went outside today and I was with the uh the persons of the community and they were looking it up, they said, what are you all gonna do about it? And quite naturally, we could have stayed home, we could have waited for the process. But we need to assure the residents of Elizabeth City that this council, and I think we've already spoken volumes tonight because we have a hundred percent of our council here today that represents the four different wards of this community. So that shows that we as a whole are concerned. So now that we've sent a message that we're concerned, we've sent a message that our police department was not involved in this, that it was in fact the county, but we need transparency. And not only do we need transparency, we need accountability. For this family to not have answers, for this family not to have answers. And what I personally wanna say, um I was glad that earlier when I made a statement that the sheriff actually has come and while it was brief, he did address the community, he did address the media. And that was a step in the right direction, but Madam Mayor and fellow council members, what I feel now as an act of transparency and as we've watched these events unfold in so many other cities where African Americans, where black men, black women have wrongfully died, we can't say that happened here yet. We don't have the information, but it needs to be put out in the forefront. The body cameras, uh that needs to be released immediately. The footage from the, and and I know I'm just one council member, but that footage from those body cameras needs to be released immediately, such as it has been in other cases. That footage needs to be released immediately so this family and this community would be able to see. We don't need to try to sweep anything under the rug. Because a lot of persons, they cannot relate to our struggle, they cannot relate, you know, as as a black entrepreneur myself and I I have a nice ride and I ride certain places and I get stereotyped, they can't relate to that. And all I could think about is I have a three-year-old son, I thought about if that could have been my son or even myself today. We need answers, we need answers. And that's why I thank Councilman Brooks and I thank Councilman Atkins for coming together. We're not here to point fingers, we're not here to even blame, we're just here to want to the answer to one question and that is, what happened? What happened? And when will we know what happened? And I'm pushing, and that's why, um, you know, I'm pushing for the the warrant needs to be released for the the media and those that would like to see. We we need answers, these body cameras. If if it was a justified shooting, that would say a lot. If it was unjustified, listen, the proof is in the pudding, let's not hide behind anything. Let's be a transparent people. And I wanna thank our manager and I wanna thank um Chief Buffalo who have, he's here tonight, he was transparent. Let's put the facts out there, let's come together and let's not have violence, let's not, let's come together and have unity. But if people feel like that things are not right and they feel like that their voice is not being heard, when if they feel oppressed and they feel like that's not coming forth, that no one cares, that's when you have retaliation. That's when cities are burned down, that's when people go up and down the street. And the reason there's some businesses that are concerned now is because they don't know what this process entails. They don't know what it looks like, people are hurting and hurt people hurt people. So we have to come together, it's a must. And I wanna thank this council for being concerned, 'cause we're all concerned, we're all concerned. And all I'm asking for is accountability and transparency. Accountability and transparency, and my prayers are with the Brown family, my prayers are with our district attorney and our sheriff. And I believe by faith that they will give us transparency and accountability, that's all I ask for. I'm not asking for a whole lot, but transparency and accountability because we deserve it. Thank you.
Uh thank you, sir. Uh Councilor Brooks?
Yeah, uh I uh I was uh so relieved. As soon as the shooting happened, people were calling me on my phone. They was calling me on my phone, so I was okay with that, you know. I was okay that people were calling me on my phone and what I tell them is that I don't know anything yet now. And I had to get that out of the way to say this, I thank uh Councilman Horton and Councilman Atkins. When I arrived there, they were already there, you know, and I applaud that and later uh uh Councilman Spence was at work and he got, I mean, all that stuff, 'cause he was at work, but they was already there and listened to the crowd, what they were saying. And uh I have to say this, uh they addressed it well, but personally, sitting on council for twelve years off and on, sitting on council, I've been arrested four times, sitting on council. Watch what I tell you. The first time I got arrested for making a statement to the police, you're wrong, using for offense against those kids. The process went on and stuff and it was kicked out, I'm going through that. I called ten on your side, that was back in the nineties. A middle-aged white guy answered the phone. He said, Councilman Brooks, he said, don't take this wrong. As a retired military guy, white and male, I can't imagine going through what you just went through. And it, and what I'm telling you is that it has been an ongoing process. It didn't stop there in the nineties. That was the first one, I've been arrested three or four times after that, sitting on council as an elected official. As an elected official. And I have to wonder, is something trying to hold me back and wonder if it's because I'm black? Based on the statement that he said to me, this is not fabricated, he said that to me, ten on your side, watch. I got arrested for quoting a scripture. And I'm thinking, man, for quoting a scripture? I got arrested, how in the world do that go before the court for quoting scripture? Does the Constitution apply to me as a black man? What about freedom of release, religion and freedom of expression and freedom of speech without any aggression whatsoever? No one have ever accused me of being aggressive as self-aware in my speech, you might not like how I say it. You know, so I had to get that out of the way. So when I get home and turn to CNN, you know, and I and I had to deal with that and I agree with uh uh the two councils spoke. When I see Elizabeth City on the map and the guy was talking about Elizabeth City and put them in the same category as those other uh uh murders, he put them in the same category with the same sadness, you know, and I'm thinking, wow, this is amazing. We know, and I, and 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 the reason why we called this meeting, I gotta get back and touch on that, is because the people wanted answers. They was questioning us and the best way to do it is in full time, let them hear what you are saying to us. We don't need to be the middle man when they can listen to it themselves. Whatever y'all say does, they hear it themselves. We only know what y'all say until the investigation is complete. We don't know what happened, but I do know this, if it's unjustified, it's murder. If it's unjustified, it's murder, that I do know. That I do know. And, uh, uh, I don't, uh, when those that say that, "Just let the county and, and, and deal with it", I, I kept hearing that. And, and, and I, and, and, and it kinda runs through me in a very bad way, because we know that the city is part of the county. The city is part of the county. We pay county and city and county taxes. We're part of the county. So in part, they have to answer to us, so I'm go- to also, with the information, and I'm not talking about giving us blow-by-blow with investigation, but when it's complete, then we'll hear that and we can tell the public. Or, uh, uh, the chief or, or the sheriff can tell the public what the findings are. That's not our job. You know? But our job is to make sure that the citizens of Elizabeth City is safe. And so, the question is, what's the objective? The answer is simple. The objective is justice. That's what the objective is. And Frederick Douglass said it best. As long as we agree with the objectives, we should never fall out amongst each other because we have different strategies, methods, and tactics in achieving our objectives. The objective is justice. You know, we not saying the, uh, uh, police department was wrong, but we not, not, not the city police is up, the sheriff department, let me get this right, because y'all don't have no hand in it. We not saying that the sheriff department was wrong, but we not saying it was right either, because we don't know anything. Because the bits and pieces that we were hearing from, from the people that was, uh, emotional, and then what I heard the sheriff say on CNN, they didn't match. So there's no way we're gonna put something out there that, uh, 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 he says, she says stuff. It doesn't make any sense. So the purpose of this meeting and call now is that make sure, see, this is a venting process. Think about it. When you go to a funeral, you are mourning a death of a loved one. They are mourning the death of a loved one. Let them vent in their way. That's what they vent, there's no aggression, and nobody trying to rush anything. Let them vent in their way. I have three sons. And I'll say this, and I'll say this, and maybe I shouldn't, but I'll say it anyway. I have three sons. I can't imagine something like that happened to one of my sons. I will go straight to the sheriff department and say, "Lock me up." I said, "Lock me up", because I would like to say, as a minister of the gospel, I'd like to say, I would say, "God bless your child in peace." I would like to think that I would do that, but just in case it don't come out like that. If I can tell you, and I, I hear this conversation with Chief, I can say, I've been arrested so many times, it was funny when I had to tell like, you remember, and I, and I went through that, but this is what I told the chief. I was so paranoid. I saw the chief one time, I said, "Chief, tell your police officers stop following me. Everywhere I go, I see them, they following me." He said, "They ain't following you." I was just that paranoid as a black man sitting on council, elected official. And chief would tell you, I said that to him. I don't know if they were following me or not, but I sure was paranoid. How can an elected official in the city of Elizabeth City feel paranoid that something's not gonna happen right to him, just because he riding around in Elizabeth City? And it's sad, because I can't, as a, i- i- it's hard. And I know sometimes, it might be hard for, I, I know I'm rumbling on and on, and they need, need to, uh, shut down, but it's hard to really let you feel what I feel as a black man on a daily basis. It's hard. It's, it's really hard. I'm telling you, it's hard. It's really hard. I can't fathom. I'm so simple. I can't fathom in a George Floyd court case, to me, it was a no-brainer. But it was a possibility, all they needed was one jury. And it would've been a hung ju- can you imagine? One person? And they didn't have to go out the fast, they can say that I had a gut feeling, because I sat on the jury room for, and what they said, I had a gut feeling, not even based off the evidence. And so what we doing is now, is making sure that those that can see it on the website, listen to what, uh, the city manager and the chief is saying to us. We as counselors, we don't have no answers. I'm not even gonna put any theories of what could've, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I won't do that. You know? But eventually, we gonna know, uh, we gonna have the pieces of deposit that we could put together to make it complete, and we can come up to a conclusion, if this fact or is this fiction? And so the meeting was called, uh, not to, uh, uh, showboat, and the meeting was called to let these people grieve in their way. Because like I said again, and I'll leave it with this, because I believe life and death is in the power of the tongue, and I don't wanna speak nothing. If I have three grown sons, if this had happened to one of my sons, I would went to the police department, the sheriff department and said, "Lock me up", because I don't know what I might do. That's how hurtful it is. It's hurtful. And I feel the same pain with, with the, that's a loved one. No matter what, because I listen to them try to discredit, uh, uh, George Floyd. And I'm sure in investigation, if they ever went to court and thing, they're gonna discredit, try to discredit this young guy. Let me tell you something. Once you commit a crime, and you go to jail and paid whatever it is for your crime, that crime shouldn't have nothing to do with the next thing that you do this outside the bounds of the law. But what they do is that, you know, because I can imagine. I can imagine. Right now, Brooks? Brooks, if somebody arrests me now, and I, I don't wanna talk about that either, because y'all know, arrest me. If somebody arrests me, I can imagine, they'll go back and talk about all those communicating threats and all the time I've been arrested. They don't, they won't talk about. The three and a half months we were talking about putting cameras on, how we were talking about crime on road note and all this stuff. They ain't gonna talk about that. They ain't gonna talk about all the other stuff that you can look on the videotape and see what the, their battle have been over the years in a poor community. They ain't gonna talk about that. One thing I can say, this is documented. For three and a half months, we been talking about cameras and road note crime, for three and a half months. So I'm really not surprised that it happened. We were sending in warning signals. Y'all can't pre- predict when it's gonna happen or how it's gonna happen, but it happened. And now all over the world, they know a little town called Elizabeth City have the same, uh, 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 law enforcement shooting a civilian as the rest of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, now what I'm going to do is I open up the floor just to indicate that, uh, I have something to say. I'll just open it up to you all before we adjourn. Uh, if you do have something to say, just raise your hand. Yes, sir. Uh, Councilman Spencer.
I, I kinda wanna approach this, um, in a dual role. Um, one, as a councilperson, um, being third ward, this happened in third ward. Um, I wanna give the family my condolences, and I wanna ask the citizens of the third ward to just trust the process for right now. Uh, we can't, we don't know facts, and I've been asked a lot of questions, and I can't answer them. I don't know what happened, I don't know why it happened, I don't know when it happened. I mean, what caused it to happen? But I do know that I'm not, I don't settle for any answer. Um, so just tru- we're gonna trust the process till the investigation is over. And I have enough faith, um, in our city and our government to see that we're gonna do what's right, or I feel we're gonna do what's right. If not, then we won't settle. Um, I, I appreciate the chief and his people, like Councilman, um, Atkins said, um, I've called them on several occasions, they've been on point. Even today, I've seen some of his people talking to people in crowds down the street from what happened. Didn't have to, but they stick out of cars and talked to them, and they was getting abused. But they were still calm and talking to them, and they had nothing to do with it. I do wanna make it clear again, this was not Elizabeth City Police Department. This was the Passau Tech County Sheriff Department. Any questions should be directed to the sheriff department. On the other side of the, the Christian side of me is this. No one rejoices when someone gets hurt or killed. My prayer is that God will put peace amongst the family, peace amongst the police, the deputy sheriff, or whoever shot the guy, because it's affecting, it's gonna affect him and his life as well. And I speak peace amongst the city. And I pray that God will do that expeditiously and do it in abundance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would hate to sit here and not to say anything. You know, I'm evil. I'm seventy-three. I hope you never do go through the pain that I have gone through. I don't know, I know the motive for this meeting, but judgment. Put my mask back on. Judgment is very important. Uh, we can think we making all the right moves, y'all, and be making the wrong moves. Some things you got to leave in God's hands. I think it, it's been too fresh for us to, uh, you know, get results. Chief, have we gone through the protocol that we supposed to be going through?
Councilor Walton, the, the protocol has been initiated by the sheriff's office and being facilitated by the State Bureau of Investigation.
Yes, because all of those other things that's happening in other parts of the country, there's something happening different in this, in diff- in this city. Another entity came from another county to, to initiate this, uh, problem. That's the problem I have with it. I hear it on the social media. My wife has it, I don't look at it. But one of the, uh, activists that were talking said, "All they had to do was give it to the police, and they took it, taking it to his house, and he would've came down there and gave, giving himself up, and you'll go pay it on Thursday at the courthouse." That's the association we have in this county, in this city. Everybody know everybody else. It didn't have to go to where it went. But in Ecclesiastes twenty-two, let ju- let God do the judging, and he'll judge for each deed there is. He will judge it, and he'll make it right. But the only thing I can say, somebody else brought the problem to us. And it's gonna be up to us. We made for this moment, y'all. We are made for it. That's why you sitting where you sitting. And it's according how we handle it, is how it's gonna come out. I know one thing, we don't, you know, the crowd got louder and louder. Let them vent, man, they need to vent. Let them put on, get on their knees and pray to it also. But you don't know how it gonna go when a protest starts. You hope they bringing a bucket of water. They could be bringing a bucket of gas, and that's not what you want. So let's be mindful, y'all, let's think about what we do before we do it. Leave it in God's hands, and thank the-
Uh, and thank, thank you to all the counselors that were able to get here.
Thank you, sir. Counselor, are you on? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, can I microphone, Mark? Yeah. Um, at this point, I, I think it's pretty mature for me to, or, um, to make a statement about the situation. Um, other than to say that this is certainly, uh, a tragic loss of life, and I certainly feel for the families that are involved. Um, I was glad to hear that our district attorney's office contacted the North Carolina, uh, State Bureau of Investigations in such a timely manner this morning, and had that investigation, um, and had them to start investigating the, uh, incident. Um, the only other comment at this time is that I think that we need to, uh, just slow down and, um, and when I say that, I mean, just let the SBI, uh, conduct, conduct their investigation into how and why this happened, and why we definitely need answers. And the family and community both, the family and the community both deserve answers. And we need to first step back and take a deep breath and get all the facts, so we know what happened and how we need to, to, um, address this. And the DA said something today when I watched the press release, and I think that it said, it said a lot. We need accurate answers, not fast answers. So please, community, just remember that. We need accurate answers. A lot of people, I agree with the council members, a lot of people are hurt, and they do need the accurate answers so they can heal. And I do think that our community needs to heal, and I thank you. I thank you.
Uh, Councilman McHare?
Um, I don't have a lot to add here. I mean, it's, um, it's really great that we could all come out together and, um, and keep your own such short notice, but, um, I, I am deeply saddened by this tragedy, tragedy and, and what happened this morning. Um, my thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Brown's family, uh, everyone who has been impacted, and really with our entire community, so, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you, sir. Uh, there are a couple of items that are on the agenda that I have to include, or did not include, is because in the event that, um, it would become, become necessary, uh, currently a certain burden, I just wanna let the council, uh, I'm going to give it back to the management to, uh, uh, to give it to me, but it is important to note that this information, this information is real, and people can assume that it may be the Elizabeth City Police Department. And I just, everyone has to decide, I just wanna say one more time, is that the Elizabeth City Police Department was not part of serving the warrant, they were not involved at all. They did not have answers to give you. Uh, some people get mixed up by that. Well, it happened in Elizabeth City. What happened, uh, what some people need to know is that Passau Tech County has its own department, Sheriff's Department, and Elizabeth City has their police department. And, uh, he, sometimes we may work in concert, and sometimes they don't. This time, they were not working in concert. So, uh, people outside may interpret this meeting as we are the ones that are responsible of trying to allay things or, or not be transparent. I don't know how we would do that, because we have been very transparent here. We have shown the utmost concern, because all eight councilors are here, and of course, the mayor is here. Uh, whether, uh, any of us thought it was a good idea to bring our contention now on us, since we didn't have a dog in the fight, but it happened, and we all had a chance to say something. And that is a good thing. So now, I'm going to go back to the manager for the courage. Sir? Sir?
Oh, yes, we don't, we don't have, uh, the, the Elizabeth City Police Department, they have nothing-
Yes, nothing.
I just, the Elizabeth City Police Department didn't have, uh, uh, anything to do with the incident that happened. But, uh, uh, I understand that the, the city is part of the county. So in that sense, I know we got two different parties, the, the sheriff department and the other police department. So there's, there's the, uh, chief, there's the, uh, chief of police and the sheriff. I'm sure they still law enforcement. They could, uh, they could talk, but since it's in the hands of the SBI, that's moot. That's moot, so, uh, I think they understand, and, and I, and I share with this. And, uh, I, uh, and, and I got a lot of stuff bottled up in me, but I need to say this and get off, I'm ready. This been long enough, uh, because we don't have any answers. We just know we gotta wait to an investigation, so we have some clear and distinct answer. Uh, uh, and Dr. King talked about this. And I started to throw that, you know, speech, part of that speech, he talked about true America. He taught one, taught them one privilege, one that he talked about to America. And I was gonna, gonna throw that out there, but I don't have to. We already understand, because it's something that echoed all over the United States, and not just over the United States. This thing with George Floyd echoed in sixteen other countries. But in, in a sense, when it come to the, uh, when it, when it, when it, uh, when it rolled east the road, we know that Elizabeth City Police Department haven't anything with it, but when it came on CNN, it said in Elizabeth City today.
Of course.
You see what I'm saying? So we have to separate fact from fiction, you know? And let the process going on. Again, I wanna thank, uh, uh, Councilman Horton and Atkins and, 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 and calling. I wanna, wanna thank them, for they was right there. And I wanna thank all the counselors that moved in there. Chief, I wanna thank all of y'all for being engaged. We gotta be engaged and watch and see what happens next. I think it'll be okay, uh, but what happens is you gotta wait to see what the facts come out, because you will also have outside entities that will come here and throw fuel on the fire. You know, so we had to be mindful of that. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes, and, and again, yeah, that's why I emphasize that sometimes people mail the two, uh, 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 police departments, or police departments together. They can say sheriff, Elizabeth City Police Department, they are two different entities. And that's not the same in, uh, a lot of, uh, the area. So I just wanted to make sure that that is clear, and that we showing up here that we were intent on showing transparency, and our police department does, they are, uh- and our police department does. They are, um, you said enough. I don't have to keep saying, I'm sure. Is that Chief Buffalo, it has a lot to do with your leadership as to how the ship sails. And, uh, the, uh, community, uh, pay very highly of the chief and his department. Because what they do is they go out and they talk with them before an incident happens. They get into the community and they go, I've seen it. I've been out there with them. So now surely I'm going to go to you, uh, uh, Mr. Manager, uh, bring it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the two matters on the agenda next is we, we need to discuss the curfew and we need to discuss the state of emergency. Uh, the state of emergency that you currently have is referenced to COVID-nineteen. Uh, as a manager, it is my responsibility to protect this community and this council and to provide all necessary support to our police chief. So in the event that we have to call in national guard, um, for help, um, that cannot happen without a state of emergency. We don't have to do the state of emergency today, but we do need to discuss the protocol and what need to happen in the event that we need that. Uh, I will turn the conversation of the curfew over to the chief. Uh, but in, in a matter of supporting the chief and making sure that we do all we can as a council and I can do all I can as your manager, um, to make decisions around curfew that will make, um, policing a little simpler for them. So I'll allow the chief to speak on the request for the curfew.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Manager, Madam Mayor, Council again. Uh, I, I think at, at this point in the juncture, uh, we've had a peaceful assembly and people are e- expressing their views and they have the right to express their views. So I, I'll be in constant contact with the city manager that need arises and, uh, if, uh, we see a curfew as needed, you know, definitely I'll be in contact with them.
Uh, Council?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So what are the protocols for that? Do you, you don't need council action for that?
Not tonight. I just wanted to put it out for discussion just to let-
You have the authority to, to do that, right?
The curfew, yes, but the state of emergency note that has to come from the mayor. But I did wanna put it out there that in the event that we need it, then I will be quickly corresponding with the council, um, so that we're all on one page. Um, there is one matter though, as it relates to the state of emergency. If we enact one and we need national guard help, then we are three days away from that help. It will take about three days is what we were told today.
Uh, yes, uh, you know, once they ramp up, then we, we go through a proper, uh, state EOC.
Yeah, it'll take about three days. And so I'll be in constant communication with the chief. Um, you will see me on the ground quite a bit. I've been moving around quite a bit today and I will continue to be on the ground. So, um, till that end, council members, please call me if you need me. I may not be in the office. Um, but the chief and I will be working very closely together to ensure the safety and security of our citizens and of the city.